This is the show unquestionable you are listening to right now. Here every Monday noon to 1:00. Often. Addressing things that are. Sometimes difficult to talk about. Seems to be one of those days. We'll be back in just a moment, but first here's a little lovely music from Homebrew. A little minute of mirrors before I go into. A recording from Santa Cruz City Council last month. Here's a little bit of Ducky's pleasant voice.
Has talked with us and said that there's no way to pursue any action regarding homeless students. Why? Because of profit. The university profits from the students, the housing market, the student housing market is one of the biggest profits that the university is getting. So why don't they want to approach their homeless students with with respect, with compassion? Because it doesn't give them any profit. So please, please help us expand your compassion to homelessness, to homeless people and to homelessness in general. That's all I have to say.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Martin. This is not on your later agenda. I believe this was a sweeping comment. That won't help that kind of a conversation that needs to be said. I've been reading in the paper and hearing, which is even more fun because you can't prove it one way or the other. About the city's desire to get in on the $9 to $10 million is supposed to help alleviate homelessness here. And I think the city needs to get rid of all your criminalizing laws or at least begin that process. Before you start asking for money to serve people that you've proven you don't like. I really need to see something more than Pamela Constock and Cynthia Chase floating a wonderful idea. And your staff, I'm not criticizing city staff, but policy is lacking, creativity is lacking. And I need to see a willingness, I really do, or you guys are going to watch me pooping in the streets, I guess, but. That you can make something small and still chase this nonsensical developer money. You don't have to choose between status quo. And what does this person right here need? That you can make decisions that are informed by by what you see. If you don't trust what everyone has to see, trip over, try to pick up, try to get sitting or dry. But just from what you know for sure. Add the human element and you'll get a better outcome. You know that. You know, I believe in adversity and I bet every one of you knows why it's dynamic at times. So. I've been watching maybe more than 40 years. How we treat people we want to ostracize or just not see. And I've been talking about Mitch Snyder all over town for nothing, it seems like. And I would like to see the city embrace an opportunity that everybody's trying to embrace, but that I can show you. About 50 nonprofits that are ready to handle. Do something creative.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. So at this point, we have.
I appreciate your challenge.
We've concluded oral communications. We extended the time an additional 15 minutes. So we will hear oral communications at the end of the item if there's time or have you be the first to speak. So we're no longer having oral communications. Okay. We have an evening item before us and I'd like to start by first acknowledging that this is a very complex and. Intense item and I want to thank you all for being here. I want you to understand my role as the presider of this meeting. To ensure that everyone has a role and opportunity to be heard that when they have the opportunity to speak, that they can feel comfortable to speak to us. And be given their time without disruption. That's the job of the mayor and the job of the facilitator of the meeting. And one of the things that council has has gone through is a process where we establish norms. I'm going to go ahead and read those norms and then I have a brief statement. So the council interactions with each other include to be respectful, to engage in open and honest communication. To be honest and truthful, to address address difficult issues, to find areas of common ground, to be open to different perspectives. To give the benefit of the doubt, to role model good leadership and to be considerate of each other's time. I also have a brief statement that I'd like to read before we go ahead and kick off tonight's agenda. I will read my statement and then I will turn it over to our staff for their presentation. We will open it up for public comment where we'll have an opportunity to hear from you all and then we'll return to council action and deliberation. So I'd like to kick off our discussion of homelessness before our staff begins the presentation. By reflecting on my hopes for tonight's proceedings and the apparent challenges we face, not only in developing policy. That will make a difference in people's lives, but in a way that we as a council treat each other and work toward effective governance. Tonight's discussion will no doubt be challenging. We are trying to alleviate pain and suffering. We are trying to make a difference. As we deliberate tonight, let's try to recognize these common values and build from there. Even through our disagreements, even through our frustrations with each other. Let's work towards consensus and do that by listening to each other and the public. This is our time to learn and listen and to that end, as I mentioned earlier today, I will be striving to ensure our dialogue is respectful and productive. And that each of you has an opportunity to speak without interruption. And I allow us that you allow me to do my job as effectively as I can and have the patience as I navigate this process with you, staff and the community. And for the benefit of the community who have come out to take part of tonight's proceedings and for those who are at home watching. There is an issue I want to address before we get started. And I'd like to speak to the perceptions that are floating around in the community, to say what I understood to be true and to recognize what many may be thinking. And I bring these up tonight to say them out loud, to address them and to hopefully set them aside. So that we as council members, as staff and the public can hold the most productive dialogue for our community that we can. For perceptions that are unnamed, that are often not addressed, if allowed to fester, can sometimes further divide us. And my hope is to bring us together. And so I want to understand that there are perceptions that my colleague, Councilmember Glover, has intentionally attempted to smear my character by suggesting I arbitrarily disallowed for this agenda item. Excuse me, this is the opportunity for me to address you all and we'll have an opportunity to hear from you as well. I arbitrarily disallowed for his agenda item to be added to tonight's discussion. As to my own actions, I don't believe that either this perception to be true. Councilmember Glover worked toward an agreeable path to providing an opportunity tonight with myself and staff. For that will allow him to bring his ideas forward and I'm open to hearing about those ideas. We have created space to hear them with our existing item and we have a process to ensure that our meetings are well planned and structured. I received an item request to agendize that on the morning of our agenda review process. And that did not allow me the adequate amount of time to add them to the agenda. And that's the reality of governance when we have so many complex issues to address and seven council members who have varying issues and items they'd like to bring forward. There's no lack of understanding the urgency of human suffering and there's no lack of understanding the importance of the public process. We are all here because of those values and we all share them in an attempt to make a difference. I also understand that there are perceptions that my colleagues, both Councilmember Glover and Councilmember Crown, are intentionally bullying me because I am a woman. That if not for my my gender, if I were a man, there would not be this question of my integrity. There would not be this question of my character. And I say this perception out loud, not to validate its truth, but rather to stand alongside my fellow council members, staff and community members. Who may feel pushed around or bullied. I say this perception out loud to name it, to set it aside and continue to speak my mind. Continue to do my job and to work on these tough issues. Continue to do the job of mayor, which I am honored to be in and to take it very seriously. I hope that we as colleagues can do the same and work together with each other as we begin our conversation tonight. And with all this in mind, I would now like to turn it over to our staff for our presentation. Go ahead.
Point of order, Mayor.
I would go ahead and. I would like to go ahead and.
We're not done with oral communications yet. Oral communications generally matters presented as oral.
You were not recognized and I appreciate your respect to address me.
I'm addressing you. I have a point of order. Do you want to look up to city attorney what point of order actually means?
Show you here.
I don't believe you have to be recognized in point of order and while he's looking, I am profoundly saddened and I apologize if there was. Ever anything that that I did that because I don't know, David was the mayor before and you know, I did lots of points of order and many.
We'll go ahead and pause your comments if we could for a moment and allow our city attorney to respond to the question before you.
I'd also love a chance to respond.
Any council member with the exception of the presiding officer may call for a point of order to bring to the attention of the council a violation of the rules. An omission, a mistake, an error in procedure and to secure a ruling from the presiding officer on the question raised. Point of order shall be raised immediately after the violation, omission, mistake or error in procedure has been committed. Council member who wishes to call for a point of order may interrupt the council member who has the floor at the time. Shall not explain the basis for his or her point of order until subsequently recognized by the chair or by the presiding officer. The presiding officer in his or her discretion may allow the council member who was interrupted to conclude his or her remarks before ruling on the point of order. Point of order is not debatable, however, the presiding officer may consult the city attorney or city manager for ruling on the point of order.
Confirming with you, city attorney, you mentioned the point of order violation has to occur and the calling has to be immediate. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so is the point of order violation something that immediately took place or is that something that has passed?
I was actually trying not to interrupt, waiting for you to finish. Generally matters presented oral communication will require, this is on page 21 of our council handbook, will require further investigation or information. Shall be referred to staff and if the council determines that action is required, the item may be placed on a future agenda. I have two issues that folks brought up during oral communication. I would appreciate the staff looking into. One is the by David and the SEIU team, SEIU bargaining team, there's two workers. They said that their wages are lower than the city living wage. I'm just wondering if the if the city manager or Lisa Murphy. Our HR person can get back to the council if that's in fact true. The other question I had is the city really unwilling to place sharps containers around Santa Cruz. That's another if you can get back to us. So I know that you can't respond, nobody can respond, but I would like it'd be nice to have a report back.
Okay, okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our staff presentation. At this time, we'll hear a presentation from staff. Then we will open it up to the council for questions, then we'll open it up to the public for public comment. And then we'll return to the council for action and deliberation.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. Good evening, council members. I'm Tina Scholl, the assistant city manager. And with me presenting this evening is Susie O'Hara, the assistant to the city manager. You've seen us many times previously talking about the issue of homelessness and that's what we're bringing before you again this evening. The last time the council addressed this issue was in December 11th and that was compendium, a large recap of all the activities in 2018. This item today is specifically related to the county and city of Santa Cruz Joint Action Plan for Emergency Shelter Provision and Encampment Management. This is an issue we know the council is eager to take up and we are eager to bring forward to you as well. So the agenda for our presentation follows along four main points. Setting some context, talking about current challenges, describing the funding and collaborative opportunities. That is why we find ourselves in a different time and place right now and talking about this issue. Three, talking about the actual joint action plan for shelter provision and camp management itself. So going through the details of how that works. And then fourth, reporting out on the board of supervisors who took up this item earlier today in their their meeting. Reporting on their action taken, Ms. O'Hara was there to watch and participate in that. And then also go over the recommended council action we have for you today. So first, talking briefly about current challenges and really nothing on this slide is going to be anything new for this council or the community members here tonight are watching. Is that there we are legitimately in a state of an unsheltered homeless crisis. The council last January, January 2018 declared a shelter crisis and made the findings that. We have such acute circumstances that we're not able to shelter our homeless population. The latest census. And point in time count showed about 1,204 individuals homeless in Santa Cruz. And the countywide average for unsheltered is 80% of that total population. So about 960 people. Were estimated to be unsheltered in the city of Santa Cruz. Now to the point in time count, there was just the recount happened on January 31st. I participated as did other staff members and other people. So we look forward to those results coming out and that will be likely June or so. Because there's a series of steps and follow up that has to happen in analysis, but we do look forward to reporting that. Based upon the anecdotal evidence in our community. Those numbers going up is an anticipated outcome, but we will see. So we are definitely in a crisis state. We also have a critical need to provide additional emergency shelter beds. This is a unified position of the city council and all of your policy actions for at least the past two to three years. And we've been working toward that end and we talked to you frequently on this issue. And then the most immediate challenge facing us is of course, the encampment that's happening along Highway 1 in River Street by the Gateway Center. That has been the most acute homeless crisis that we have, the most tangible example of a lack of shelter. And the human suffering and the need we have in our community, as well as impacts on other community members, residents and businesses nearby. As well as impacts on the environment. We heard about needles and the watershed. It's a very complex issue that was referenced earlier. But so this really has is the top of our priority to discuss and we'll be, we have an action plan around that to discuss with you. So what makes now different in terms of opportunities? We've had a lot of energy, staff time.
This is the show unquestionable here on KZSC Santa Cruz. What you just heard. Was a recording. From a portion of the Santa Cruz City Council General Open Session Meeting. During the oral communications of February 12th. Now, I don't normally. Play long chunks of government meetings, but that was a moment. That I felt needed to be laid out in. As much. Context as possible, including. The. Report by staff at the end of that recording, laying out what they planned to address at that February 12th meeting. After all of the controversy over what could have been on the agenda, as you may have heard, what wasn't allowed on the agenda. And some of the. Personal differences between city council members that were. Intervening into their conversations about. Differences of a position on political matters. The reason I bring this up. Is to start a conversation with you, the listeners. Our number is 831-459-4036. Again, that's 831-459-4036. Here in the studio. The reason I bring it up is because it is the subject of a lot of discussion around town. And rightfully so, became the cover story of the good times this week. Now. Obviously, these conversations have continued to go on between city council members, between former city council members featured in the article. Nonprofit groups considered vital to the article and many other parties. That just live in Santa Cruz and hold stakes in issues of homelessness and housing and cost of living prices. I included a couple of the public comments before that because a student addressed. How they feel. The student population has been treated in this debate. I will put in there as an aside that I feel like students are used as a prop by all sides of the housing argument. But often. Not to their benefit. I guess being used as a prop is probably never to your benefit. Unless you get to play a table and your back is sore. But students get used as a prop. I just want to put that in. As a reason why housing can't be affordable here or the reason why UCSE has to have so many people housed in town. Or why UCSE needs to spend more money to build housing on campus. Or why landlords keep raising rents. With a close person to me, about 70% this year. And students often get thrown in there as a prop. So I thought that was a good comment to throw in the beginning. But that's not what the the crux of this matter was. The crux of this matter is that Mayor Martin Watkins. Feeling as. A female mayor that she's been treated differently. We got some. Interesting blinking lights on the phone there. I do have a call coming in, it looks like. Yeah, let's see here. My apologies if you were trying to get through before. I just noticed there were different blinking lights, but what's going on? Hello?
Hi, my name is Angela and I'm calling from Monterey.
Can you turn off your radio or get off speakerphone as well, please? Whichever one's true, just so we can hear you well.
How's that?
That's much better. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And I just tuned into your station and I listened to probably about, I don't know, maybe about 10 minutes of the briefing that they had with Mayor Watkins. And I was really interested in it mainly because. We've had such bad weather since 2016. You know, we've had three years of just, you know, heavy winds, storms, cold, freezing. Since I think I came back to Monterey in 2016. And with all the technology and all the money and all the resources. That people have, you know, it's just so surprising that they just can't. You know, just seem to agree on just getting a, you know, just a nice big warehouse and make it an emergency shelter.
Well, we we have had those things in the past and we have, we have. We have that capacity in certain numbers. But it hasn't been reaching the numbers that we need. And even I would ask you this because I disagree with myself on these issues sometimes as a lifelong Santa Cruz resident. A, also, it's good to keep in mind, this is not just happening in Santa Cruz, but.
Oh, I know. We have a, we have a, I actually had to, when I came back in 16. I didn't have a place to live and so for like a month I was sleeping in my truck. And and so the reason why it touched me so dearly, it's because I actually. Went through a couple of the organizations and kind of just checking out what was going on with the homeless women. And what I found is that it's just so poorly directed and it's so poorly handled.
You mean the resources available?
Well, there's resources. I know there's resources.
But you're saying they're not being directed in an efficient way. I'm just trying to.
Not sufficiently directing them. I mean, even on a rainy day in 2016 in December. I went to this, I didn't know it was a homeless woman's luncheon, but it was a homeless woman's luncheon. And everything looked great from the surface, but the food was cold. Could you imagine eating cold spaghetti? And cold salad on a rainy day?
Maybe cold salad.
Forgot to put the pasta in the oven. And then I I checked out some other things and connected. I wanted to see how this thing's worked. And I found out that they have so much money and they have so many resources. But the lady was in charge for two years and she still hasn't gotten it. She's still acting like she's just learning the program and we're doing our best, but they have no pattern of success there. They're not modeling themselves after what can work. And and they're shuffling these precious people. And and so I think really. If they really want to help, they could just, you know, utilize some of these big places and those extra five, 600 people during these storms. They can, you know, just get them a roll out sleeping bag, get them a fresh shower, get some beans and some rice and some bread and. And and just do something that's practical.
Thank you very much for the call and thank you for your input. Thank you for listening too. Have a great day. We're going to open up lines for other people. Thank you so much though. And you can also call in yourself at 831-459-4036. Somewhere along me playing that clip at the beginning of the show. I feel like maybe I had the phones off at some point. I may have hit a button wrong or maybe it was there from before. But we got another call coming in, which makes me think that someone didn't get through and is rightfully frustrated with me. Hello, you're on KZSC.
Hey, thanks for letting me through then.
Yeah, what's going on?
I've got a simple perspective to share that I think people should mull over. This issue about housing and homelessness and stuff. Instead of just thinking about how to house the homeless. You know, like essentially that's going to mean they're going to get tents and support and food and shelter. Why not think of a way to improve our system of living where. You know, normal people would want to take up this option. You know, that'd take pressure off of housing if we could think of some sort of maybe summer camp like system that.
Are you suggesting making camping desirable to people that have homes? I'm asking it seriously. Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, these people that are in this state of homelessness that we see around us these days, they're the worst off, the most afflicted. And it's a tough, it's it's not an easy solution to fix their lives. We should, but the kind of effort that I'd go into making space for them is something that would be worth looking into making a space for people in general.
All right. Thank you so much for the call and again, also thank you for listening. The number is 831-459-4036. I do appreciate any of the comments related to this story, but while I have a moment here. I do want to get back into the clip and the part about the fact that on February 12th. The Santa Cruz City Council meeting, the seven o'clock session, which includes oral comment and then agenda items that weren't in the. The consent agenda, which means consent agenda items mean that there is enough information on them. There's been enough discussion. And the council is in enough agreement. In which case they don't have to discuss each item and they vote on anywhere between one and sometimes 30, 40 items. In a single vote because there's been. Reports submitted and it's to give free squeak toys to puppies at the SPCA and no one disagrees with that and they go with it. Or sometimes it's to renew a contract. Sometimes it's for big items, but it's for something that so many council members agree on. That it doesn't need future discussion on specific items. So then the later session past the consent agenda. Are items that they are going to discuss. And one of those items on the main highlighting item on that agenda from February 12th was $10 million. For various. for various housing-related initiatives. And that was what was going to be the the headline item on that agenda. Keep in mind, that meeting started at 11:00 AM. And this was 7:00 PM. They do have a lunch break and there's closed sessions and all of these other things, but. That 7:00 PM session was set to take a few hours as well. And the crux of the frustration for many of the people on the council besides Mayor Watkins feeling that she's being treated differently by Councilmember Crone and Glover as a female mayor than other mayors have been treated or other council members have been treated. Was the fact that this was a very long meeting and Councilmember Glover, who's new to the council as of the last couple of months. Had submitted items to Mayor Watkins to be on the agenda. However, he did, I believe by his own admission too. Submit them after a certain deadline that is put in place so that agenda items have time to be reviewed and prepared for so that all parties know what they're talking about a bit as long as they do their homework. You can't always ensure that someone's gonna read about something. But the Mayor Watkins turned down those items being on that agenda for February 12th because there was already, as I've seen, that video is 12 hours long. So it was already an 11, 12-hour meeting scheduled and that they were past the the set deadline for items to be on. I want to read this text message. Thank you for making the housing situation a focus. Oh, my God, it disappeared. There it is. Thank you for making the housing situation a focus of your discussion. The Warming Center has been arguing for transitional encampments and I think this is a crucial time to make that a reality. Thank you for the text. You can be like that caller and text in if you'd like. Well, you could be like that texter and text in, or you could be like a caller that called in before and get your voice on the air, which always breaks up the monotony of my raspy voice. But. Getting back to this meeting was that there was frustration on many sides about these agenda items not being on the agenda. There was frustration on Mayor Watkins' side being pressured to put agenda items on or or being. I guess pressured is how some people would say it. Um, other people would say that Drew Glover wrote a blog saying that he wanted people to encourage her to get these agenda items on as soon as possible. And what I see that in the article, in the Good Times article, possibly, call in and correct me if you'd like. What I saw that as him saying was, I do understand they can't get on there right now, today, February 12th. I'm very frustrated with that, but please encourage the city council to get these items on as soon as possible. And this has since blown into a, like I said, full cover story on the Good Times. In which many sides are debating whether or not there was bullying on the city council, whether or not. Councilmember Glover and Councilmember Crone, Chris Crone, who's been on many times and been mayor in the past, are in a pattern of treating this female mayor, Martine Watkins, differently than, say, David Tarazas from last year. I will say that David Tarazas in the article is stated as saying that he doesn't see a difference necessarily in the way that Chris Crone is treating Mayor Watkins. He was not on the council with Drew Glover, so I won't speak to that. But that there were differences in David Tarazas and Chris Crone's politics, absolutely. David Tarazas is much more, I feel, aligned with Martine Watkins in the more centrist democratic part of the party, which in Santa Cruz, the centrist Democrats are still pretty far left as far as the rest of the country goes. And Chris Crone and Drew Glover are definitely more on the Ocasio-Cortez, Bernie Sanders, more pushing to the left socialist side of the Democratic Party. I will say in defense of the word socialism, if you don't like socialism, Somalia's beautiful this time of year. If you make money, there's no taxes, you can keep all of it, there's no socialism. But there's also not a police department to help you out if someone wants that money. So our society is made up of socialism and capitalism put together. So I don't see it as a bad word. There's just different wings of this party and Drew Glover was pushing very hard for this. There is a bit of a review going on in the city council right now over certain interactions that have happened between Martine Watkins, Drew Glover, and the whole relationship of the city council with various other members. I'm not gonna throw out names of people when I'm not sure what all the circumstances are, but the Good Times tried to get those documents around reports around those interactions. They were not given them. However, it doesn't seem like it's a severe enough situation where someone is going to be off the city council. Mayor Watkins said that she wanted to say these words out loud and put them aside, but she wanted them said out loud. And is willing to work with Drew Glover says that in the Good Times article that she has spoken with him since that incident and is totally happy to speak with him further and to continue working on the city council with him. That does not mean that there aren't legitimate issues on the way that people conduct themselves. The city council passed a policy, a specific policy change for how to relate with people on the council. A couple years ago, they felt that was necessary. And different political bodies around the world work differently. UK Parliament, they actively encourage heckling and yelling at each other. Sometimes things are thrown. There's, I think it's the Taiwanese government. I forget, but they're pretty famous for like fistfights in their congressional bodies as opposed to the US Senate where you're technically not allowed to talk bad about someone, no matter how horrible they are. Um, and that's very selectively enforced, of course. So the Santa Cruz City Council was well within their rights to pass a specific policy based on how they wanted to relate with each other that I don't think anyone would oppose of them maybe seeing an issue or maybe seeing a loophole, something that wasn't covered in their policies before and passing that. And I think that's probably what the city council is looking at as far as people bringing up issues of the current council getting along. I definitely am not going to dismiss any of the charges today on the show. Disclaimer, I've been friends with Drew Glover since we were 12 years old. We haven't always been in contact, but we have been friends for a long time. And I just want to put that out there. So there's no like mystery or gotcha moment when someone says that I was friends with him. But I am also not going to dismiss these charges that people are bringing up, nor am I gonna say that those charges of difficult relations or impolite behavior or treating people differently based on their gender or any other circumstance are completely accurate at this point. Obviously, a lot of this is under review, but I did want to open up the discussion to the listeners about what's going on with city council because I spoke with a friend in front of Lulu Carpenter's downtown that I hadn't seen in a while. She used to cut my hair. My hair is like a foot and a half long now and she wondered what the hell happened. She's not a political hairdresser at all. She's not talking politics when she's cutting hair. However, her friend sitting across the table is a very passionate, argumentative person like me. And I brought up this incident and they said that it's getting really bad. And I've kind of stayed away for a little while. I'm giving myself a mental break. I had to watch the videos of this later to know what was going on. But this person that I don't think needs to be named on air, they go by the name of a color, in fact. Um, but they said it's getting really bad. And when I basically said that I've known Drew for a long time and was surprised by this situation arising, she shut down on me really quick. And I was like, whoa, I haven't been at these meetings. I'm gonna try and have a conversation. I said, hey, listen to the show tomorrow. And she said, well, I'll listen depending on how the conversation's going. And that's fair. It's totally fair. And I'm not trying to have a defense of either person here. But I'm also very skeptical when people have differences of opinion on issues and then other statements are thrown out, especially when one person tried to say that Drew Glover and Chris Crone have been bullies of Sandy Brown, who, a former mayor who actually I like a lot, Cynthia Chase, basically said that she felt people were very aggressive with her when she was mayor in 2017. So there are other people saying this, but then also, I believe she was the one that said Sandy Brown, yes. She also said that Sandy Brown had been the receiving end of some of these, as Chase said, verbally abusive acts by Chris Crone. But when Sandy Brown was asked about her interactions with Chris Crone, she disagreed, telling Good Times, she has no problem with Crone's behavior or political style and is quoted as saying, "There are different ways of communication," says Brown, who adds that she misses Chase dearly. "Chris and Drew have a much more direct way of communication. That makes a lot of people uncomfortable. It's never made me uncomfortable." So that was one thing in the article that I was very questioning of. I have not been able to reach Cynthia Chase yet about that. And I am not going to dig into what is her position at this point or feeling at this point. But it is important to note that someone that she said was on the receiving end of these things said that they weren't. So this is all under review, but I really wanted to bring it to the attention of the community who may listen to the radio when they're out and about, but maybe doesn't make it to city council meetings for whatever reason. You're busy, you have kids, you have responsibilities. My only excuse with my privileged life is that I wanted to shut down and take a break from it. Um, I was told by David Tarazas during a debate on my phone in front of a taqueria for about an hour that maybe I should run for city council. It's not in the cards for me at the moment. Nor do I think I ever want to be. Because of something Rachel Maddow had said at one point, which was basically that to be a journalist and to be a commentator, she had to not participate in those things. And you see so much of Fox News, Fox News, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, going out and actively campaigning and sometimes having shows and then running for office afterwards and then just like no separation of lives that they have. And I'm not willing to do that. I would rather bring these conversations to the public. I would rather work for a newspaper if I can afford to pay for more than a tent doing it. And I would rather be on radio shows and speak my voice through that. But I do commend these people that take on these positions. I know Cynthia Chase felt like the city council was exhausting. And actually, some of the types of, she cites some of the pushiness that she perceived from Chris Crone was one of the reasons she was like, I'm exhausted with this. He wants long meetings. He wants all these agenda meetings. I don't know if I can continue to do this and and be happy. Um. But David Tarazas also, on the other side, says in the article that he's not sure that it's true that Chris Crone is treating Martine Watkins differently than the way he was treated by Chris Crone. Now, he says although he generally enjoyed working with Crone, he says he's not sure that Crone treated him any differently than Tarazas. Tarazas explains that he tried to handle any potential issues before council meetings got underway. "I did my best to and schedule one-on-one discussions and address his concerns to prevent them from spilling out into public." That being said. Some people don't respond to interactions the same way. I definitely have people that cannot stand me because I'm a little abrasive. A little is a very, very flexible word. I'm a very abrasive person at times. I'll admit it. And I often want to talk about politics and people don't often want to talk about politics. And I understand that and I try to not do that all the time. So I say that in the sense that these do involve levels of subjectivity. And I don't want to try to state how anyone feels that I haven't spoken with yet. But I did want to bring this to the attention of the city, the area that the new city council does actually have political differences with each other for the first time, really during my adult lifetime. And a lot of that has been pushing back towards the old school left side of things. That's funny. Uh, I'll read that in a second. Thank you, Tanny. Uh, that was a text that came in. And I don't want to speak to how other people feel or any of that. But I thought that everyone should know that as the homelessness problem and the housing issues continue to be discussed, discussed, and as they live with what I feel is fake rent control being on the books, it's getting harder to discuss actual policies and regulations that will help tenants because people that read the Santa Cruz papers think that because this weird relocation assistance bill got passed last year, that there is rent control. It's not rent control. It actually, in my opinion, encourages landlords to raise rents as high as possible because they have to pay two months rent to the person that moves out because they can't afford it. And if they just bump up their rents super high, they make back that money in three months. So who cares? Give the tenants two months rent, get rid of them and raise the rent. And because of that bill being on the books now, people feel like rent control was passed. It wasn't passed. And there are, am I single? That's cute. There are discussions that still need to be had. They are going to be difficult. And it is important that we dig into issues of people being put upon in ways that are not related to politics or discriminatory ways so that we can get to the matters at hand. So I don't want to shut down this conversation by having this show. I want to figure out what, as a, as a, a strange orange leader said, I want to know what the hell is going on. And I think that's the part that we need to understand. Tanny wrote in, Kat Brooks is an extremely accomplished journalist and almost won mayor of Oakland. Where would she put the mayor of Oakland if she wanted? Don't put yourself in a silo, change the world. Okay, thank you so much. I don't know if I want to do that. I might want to make documentaries and write books or help other people write books while my attention span zings off to the next thing. And another text came in, are you single, Dan? With lips. Um, that's really cute. Uh, you know? How do you define single? Anyways. We're almost out of time here. And thank you for the calls. Thank you for the texts. This will go on. I wanted to alert the community to it. Anyone who doesn't actually read the Good Times beyond the movie listings and show listings and food. That cover story is still available around town. It's from the March 5 issue. And it comes out every Wednesday, so that means that they are floating around still. You can also find it online at, is this GT Weekly? Anyways. I closed that tab. No, yeah, GoodTimes.SC is their new website. And slash cover stories slash Santa Cruz, City Hall bullying, you can find out about that. I want to address something really like about myself, though, kind of a confession of myself on the air today. And I don't know, something to think about because you always have to live your own life and you can't keep track of everything always going on. But I had a friend who filmed the city council meetings for about 12 years or so, like 700 hours of city council footage. He missed two meetings, one when he was visiting a Santa Cruz sister city in Russia and one when he was in the hospital. And he was just a fixture at the Santa Cruz City Council. I stopped going to meetings. Last time I saw him, I was driving him to doctor's appointments because he didn't really have a lot of people to hit up. He was like no internet, landline, handwritten phone numbers, super old school, using big video cameras, awesome guy, made me tons of connections in town, filmed the holiday parade with him. And I don't know, life got away from me. And apparently on my graduation day last year, he passed away. And I don't fault anyone for not calling me because they didn't know I was friends with this 72-year-old dude, this weird dude that filmed. But I felt like the worst friend in the world. And I just want to say that I can't beat myself up for it. But like, when I last drove him to the hospital for an appointment, he said he was freaking out about congestive heart failure. And he was like, my heart's never failed. What are they talking about? What are they talking about? And I was like, no, it means your heart's dying, everyone's heart's dying. Your heart is dying quicker than other people's. And I don't know why he didn't call me. In between then, he came to our screening for our film class in March of last year. And like I said, I went with him to the doctor a few times. I don't know if he thought he was bothering me by doing it or what, but Peter McGeadigan didn't call. didn't call me, no one knew to call me. I was shut down, I was doing other things. And then I thought, you know, I haven't seen Peter for a long time and I gave him a call and his phone was disconnected. And then I checked the, you know, the internets and I searched his name and I found his obituary from literally my day of graduating at UCSC last year. And it's happened to me twice in the last, I had a friend who was dying of cancer, he was in his twenties, he passed away, I did know about that, I went to his funeral. And then there was a third person, an artist, Dan Stolpe, who I also had a weird unlikely relationship with this like 77-year-old weird artist dude who passed away in December. I'd visited him many times at his assisted living place. The Santa Cruz Art League hit me up because I was in his phone list and they knew that I was working on a documentary about him. I will get that to you guys, I'm gonna re-edit it. But I found out he passed away much too late as well. I don't fault anyone for not calling me, I fault myself for being an absent friend, but I also can't beat myself up. I just wanted to voice how cool they were and how weird of Santa Cruz icons they were. And hopefully, you know, community television doesn't completely transform into this weird corporate thing that it's changed into and Peter McGedigan was totally against that and having to pay to rent gear and he felt like it should be community access for everyone. And it's just really jarring to find all that out in like a couple of weeks. Dan Stolpe, on the other hand, was a symbol of Santa Cruz. He did the bear man statue, which was recently taken down at the Museum of Art and History down in Seabright because people kept vandalizing the genitalia and the city was like, we're not gonna keep fixing it. And he was like, oh man, okay, fine. But it was a really cool statue. He was a weird archetype of Santa Cruz where he lived in this warehouse space at the end of Mission Street Extension where he had an apartment that was totally fire department regulated and up to code and he had his art studio in there. And I want to just plug that before I get out of here and let ankle biters take over to fix whatever I've done to you, because they're gonna be bringing you the latest from new emerging artists under the age of 25 with DJ Sap coming up for an hour. But he lived in a cool spot and I think that Oakland fire really scared people away from the idea of warehouse, like mixed housing for arts spaces, but his was like a single apartment with an art studio. And I think as we think about homelessness issues and housing, um, my friend Dan Stolpe, who passed away in December, could maybe stand as an example, because I don't think they're gonna let someone live in his apartment anymore, even though it's a beautiful spot out on Mission Street Extension. And maybe we should look at those kind of ideas in the future. And I just wanted to confess that my life got away from me and I didn't get in touch with those people. So they're very missed and I know anyone who's involved in city council probably knew both of them at times and I figured it was a good way to end the show. Thank you so much for listening to Unquestionable. I'm Dan Wu. I'll be back next week and I'll also be hosting Talk About on Wednesday with sociology professor Chris Benner being a guest to talk about projects his grad students take on. Thank you so much and DJ Sap, I'll let you take over here.